Okay, this time we're gonna call our October meeting the Bank of Education to order. My clock has got six o'clock, so we'll start like welcome each and every one of you here. We'll be moving fast and mainly looking forward to seeing what the children will be doing for us. Shall we say? First though is our moment of silence, so if we would, if you would, have everyone stand please. And I'll always turn to our board member, our vice chair, Mr. Kate.
We always take moments for our business, just in time to scare even in our own country.
Thank you. Thank you. Ms. Love, go put your spot for place to leave, because I understand you have several children here, so if you would, tell us who they are and we'll let them leave.
Sure, these are several of our awesome sixth graders from Mountain View Intermediate School, and they volunteered to be here tonight to present to the Board of Education about a field trip that we had for the last five years. And so, I'm just real thrilled that the students were excited about being here and that their parents were excited about bringing them. And if y'all want to step right up here to the front, can y'all come squeeze up here and try? And turn and face the audience there. Oh, beautiful library here, sir.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next, then we move on, is approval of our minutes. All the board members had a chance, I think, to review those. Were there any correction, changes that need to be made?
I would make a motion to accept as presented.
A motion to accept the minutes, up to the end, do I hear a second? A motion's a second, I'm in favor soon, if I say aye. Be opposed. So move. Also, it's time for us to adopt our agenda, there may be a couple of changes. Mr. Vale, did you have, before education, Kate, you might want to add?
Yes, I need to add, need to add a cross-country girls are going to be going also with the cross-country boys. We have two students who qualify at the state meeting, so we're gonna add those to the list tonight also. And they'll be going in the same bus together, so.
And you have that already. At least, is that Coach Vale?
Right. You already have the boys, of course, already correct. Also, I want to add David Price to be a volunteer wrestling coach for Franklin High School, or making middle school, excuse me, making middle school wrestling.
I made a motion to accept the gentleman as presented with the cross-country girl out of Trinidad, that David Price as the middle school wrestling also.
So motion to approve the agenda, were there any other changes that need to be added by any board member? So if not, we have a motion saying, I'll even say aye. So move. We're gonna step with our agenda. Dr. Paul, I'm gonna turn this over to you on spotlight people programs, I'll turn it over to you this time, please.
Ms. Vale, Mrs. Don Vale is here, would you like to discuss our high school exchange program?
I have had the privilege of working with foreign exchange students for the past six years, and I work with a program called Ayusa International. And I was checking records, and this actually marks the 10th year that Franklin High School has worked with our program. And I thought that was kind of appropriate to come and just acknowledge that. And I don't know where Mr. Woody went. I would like for Mr. Woody to come, and I have some extra help, they know who they are. This year Franklin High School has five exchange students from Ayusa International, and I will let them introduce themselves to us real quick.
I'm Cora, I'm from Germany, I'm 17 years old.
I'm Christina, I'm from Czech Republic, and I'm 17 years old.
I'm Toni, and I'm 16 years old, I'm from Germany.
I'm Leah, I'm from Germany too, and I'm 16 years old.
I'm Paloma, I'm from Netherlands, and I'm 16 years old.
And these are just great kids. And I've had the privilege of hosting myself with our family four different times. And the host families that are here now, if you'll just wave your hand or whatever. Dawn Cappor, he's hosted twice, and the Bosios have as well. Veronica, this is her first time. But, Mr. Woody, we would like to tell you thank you, and how much we appreciate the high school and the school board and the school system and the teachers, just the whole faculty on welcoming in our students. And what a difference the school makes. And without the school, there would not be a program. Because it's because of the school's generosity, it's just volunteer. They don't have to accept in our students. They are very interested in the cross-cultural exchange, and I just really appreciate that, and I presume that y'all appreciate that as well, because you're here. But we would like to present the high school with a plaque, just saying, presented to Franklin High School in appreciation for welcoming Ayusa International students into your school. Your generosity and guidance have made a world of difference in promoting international education and cross-cultural understanding. So, I just wanted to. Hosting is a great thing, you learn about the countries and you make a difference. You really, truly make such a difference, and they do become a part of your family. Hopefully, you're not just looking for just learning about their country, wanting to get to know them as well. And so, you know, it's a great thing the school does, and I just.
Their pleasure to have, my bad.
Thank you. I see that we told they each had to make a 15-minute speech. Which we have four papers to prepare.
My next presentation, Dr. Paul.
Next, we have Ms. Ripeto, to discuss Hispanic Heritage Month, work and contents. As Mr. Ripeto's coming up here, I'd just like to say that on Friday, I was at town making for the Hispanic Heritage Month celebration that they have down there. And I was really impressed with the cultural activities that they had, the flag parade that the students and the Ripetos put on for us, it was really good.
I was impressed with the food they had that night. While getting ready? Yeah.
Good evening, my name is Sandra Ripeto, I'm a fifth-year student from Macon County Schools, and I serve for different schools, Art du Gardien, Ayala Valley, Mountain View, and South Macon. First, I want to thank Mr. Baldwin for his open door policy, for his support, all the principals from the schools, Mr. Lynch, Ms. Bell, Mr. Bowles, Mr. Sodden, for all the support that you give to the Hispanic community. This year, we celebrate the Hispanic Heritage Month during the month of October. And one of the goals, I'm gonna talk about the goal that I was supposed to reach, that was to reach the parents, try to let them be part of the educational system. Because if the Hispanic parents are part of the educational system, our children will do better, and will be better for our teachers. Now, I'm gonna let my good friend, Kim Pinkston, talk about the students, because she's a ESL teacher, and she's the one that deals, and she loves the students.
So this year, we involved all students, Hispanic and non-Hispanic, and it's been absolutely amazing. I feel like we've taught a lot, Sandy Bocca and I, with to the students about what Hispanic heritage actually means. It's a huge concept, I know, for children, Hispanic culture, Hispanic heritage. So I think that with all the activities we've done this month, and I know with the poster contest with what we're going to present tonight, it's given an opportunity for the parents at home also to kind of reinforce what we're teaching them at school and to kind of enhance what they're learning at school with Hispanic Heritage Month. So it's been an amazing experience, I love, obviously, all of my students, Hispanic and non-Hispanic, and it's just been an awesome experience, and we're gonna present.
Yeah. One of the activities that we did during this month was a poster and a drawing contest. The drawing contest was from K to 2, and the poster contest was from 3 to 4. And I will not go over the guidelines, because I know that you had a very busy night tonight. But, one of the goals was to reach the non-Hispanic students. And I'm very happy to announce, 90% of the participants were non-Hispanic. And the theme was Hispanic Heritage, yesterday, today, and tomorrow. And the winners, 95% of the winners are non-Hispanic. Therefore, we crossed a bridge in there. And thank you so much for the teachers that helped us, for the principals too. I'm gonna let Ms. Pinkston call the winners, because of my accent, I can maybe stay with that last year. Let's start with the drawing. So I have the drawing here.
Ayala Valley Drawing Contest winner, she drew this in El Valle, she's Ariana Diaz-Ocevedo. We have Florrie Robinson. Little dolls and cute, she's in a true globe, she's up here, and then we have the.
That's really close.
Okay. And then, we have our poster contest winner, Ms. Emma Breeden. She's here, I know. This is really awesome, I want that to know, okay, tell them about your poster.
I sponsored a little foundation assist through a child's hat. And in her past, I'm just really. This is her right now. And she said in her little information plate, it said, this is.
Awesome, thank you so much. Okay, and for Carkey and Jerry, K2 winner is Mera Mary Gilliam? Mary Gilliam? Mary, is that, is that?
It's a baby.
Okay, that's you, Ms. Mary, sorry. And do you want to tell about your drawing? Okay, show me.
I took this drawing, and my teacher, she put up something on the board, and there were lots of pictures of ladies, colorful dresses, and lots of things like foods and different things, and the point for me was, I took the things that I saw and I put them on my pictures. And I wanted to have a chance to win, and I did.
And the Freefall winner is Lainey Bowers. You want to tell us about your drawing?
Sir, it's a hat. This is the food that I eat, these are people that I know, and then this is stuff about history. It says, "The Spanish means people from Mexico, Spain, and America, Puerto Rico, these are all Spanish foods I like," with the airplane over there. On the very end, these are the Spanish people I know. I do not personally know Selena Gomez. I know she is Hispanic, I know a lot more people who are Spanish speaking. I can count to 10 in Spanish, but I can't speak it yet.
From Mountain View, we have Maria Menatello. Maria Menatello? Okay?
Last but no leaves, I want to express my thanks to Ms. Nancy Contral for her support to ESL Department, thank you.
Yes, thank you.
Next, Dr. Paul.
Next, we have Ms. Love, interesting, Mountain View. We were talking about that special field trip that they had a few weeks ago, Migration Day, Ms. Love?
Well, this is Ms. Love, first of all, I can see it was our Teacher of the Year last year, and could be competing every year. And we've worked together since our days at middle school, I guess. And her knowledge and experience that she brings to the students is invaluable, and she has been in this field trip for a number of years. And what the kids take away from it is just enormous amounts of information, and being able to apply what they learn in class to how that applies outside of class, or to how it may apply for their future jobs. So appreciate, a couple more for letting us go.
This is a similar group, I worked with somebody's folks last year when I was down with. It was a wedding.
What a presentation, yep.
And I was thoroughly impressed, I think Mr. Shield, I was thoroughly impressed with his group today, so I'm excited to have them present.
Thank you. Um, Migration Day Field Trip, we call it Migration Celebration. About five years ago, we decided that, actually, I worked with my husband on this, and he was nailing it a few minutes ago. Oh, okay. My husband works, and so we don't have to launch a yard program. And one of our goals was to get students outside to learn more about the environment that they live in, their backyard, their schoolyard. And we have this magnificent thing happening every year, many times a year. We've got butterflies flying over our heads that are migrating all the way from Canada to Mexico. We've got hawks and birds and all kinds of animals that are migrating every year over our heads. They visit us, and then they move on. And we thought it'd be a great opportunity to work with some local scientists to teach the students how science taught in the classroom is actually applied in real life. So have scientists actually use masks in the real world. That's been on their test about three times now. So how do they actually use that? How do they, why do they need to know how to use a ruler? Why do they need to know the metric system? And so it was a great day to go out to a place called Tessaty Farm, which is a land trust with Little Tennessee property, that they allow us to come out and do this field trip on the site, and it's just a great day. And like I said, I had this wonderful group of students who volunteered their time here this evening. I asked, "Who would like to help me with the presentation?", and I couldn't turn anybody down. But we've got a large group of folks here, and I'm very, very proud of them and excited that they came here this evening. If you want to go ahead and give the first slide. I do want to just thank the Land Trust of Little Tennessee, the County to LTR School Yard Program, who purchased, at the beginning, over $5,000 worth of equipment for our science teachers. And this is all the science teachers at Mountain View Intermediate, and it is available for other teachers to use. But there are anywhere from water testing kits to heat energy equipment, convection current apparatus, all kinds of really neat things to use in our science classrooms. So that's been very, very helpful. The Southern Appalachian Raptor Research Center is a group that is, they're doing the bird banding, they're just doing their research, and they allow us to come in, and allow students to come in and see what they're doing and help, actually, with their research. And the students are gonna talk about that in a second. And then also, I do thank my husband for coordinating it. He arranges the porta potties to be delivered and important stuff, and making sure that the farm is mowed and all the trails are weeded and everything ready for 350 students every year to come out to the farm and participate in this trip. So every single sixth grade student that goes through our school in Mountain View has done this field trip for the last five years. And these are just a few of the things that we learned. There are four stations, and my students are gonna explain what they learned and what they did at each of these four stations.
Butterfly population inventory. The question, what species of butterflies and dragonflies are found in Macon County in western New York? We use arrow and lights to catch butterflies. And the acid, so they like make the number of kinds of butterflies for the past five years. Every year, um, we have a group of students participate in operation. This is the pearl crescent, this is the most common species we found representing one-third of all capture. This is the comet, Darnar Dragonfly. There are 84 different kinds of dragon, of dragonfly found in Macon County. So far, we have caught 676 butterflies of 33 different species. We learned butterfly species, lots of scales on them, and thanks for that, to love migration, and I think that's the only thing I'm aware of. This is the checkered white butterfly. This red butterfly was caught by teacher Denise Shields in 2012. There's an Aaron Alistair cop in Oakwood, Skippert, which is from the 3014, which is a new county.
Okay, Monarch Watch Citizen Science Project. Our question was, how is the Monarch butterfly population doing?
Some examples of what we learned at this station are, a way to tell a Monarch female from a Monarch male. A Monarch male has two black dots at the bottom outside of its wings. Monarchs migrate from Canada to Mexico. The Monarchs migrate in groups and fall asleep when it starts taking cold. They make a lot of rest stops to sleep and feed on food. When they're caterpillars, they feed on milk food. They start to change into butterflies when they make a chrysalis and stay in it for a few days. Or they can fly, they have to wait until their wings drop. In over a five-year period, students have tagged and released 23 Monarchs.
Here is a chart of the butterfly population, and as you can see, in 1996, it was an all-time high. And as you can see, in 2013, it is an all-time low. And this year is supposed to be even lower. And the reason these populations are dropping is because mostly pesticides and other things.
On our field trip, we played a game called Migration Headings. The game showed how realigned birds and butterflies migrate to places far away, but they have to go through places that have power lines under it, and they have lost their habitat. We learned that birds and butterflies have to go through places, go through a lot to migrate to these places to feed.
Here's some things that will, the Monarchs and butterflies will destroy their migration, it'll ruin, it'll just mess it up. And that's to people hunting, the power lines, predators, lots of habitats and storms. Storms, but with this, what many Monarchs and birds can't get to their next location. Some things you can do to help Monarchs get to all Mexico is you can conserve habitat, you can clean water, you can keep pets indoors for having a meltdown, you can provide a habitat outside, or you can plant milk food, and turn off their outdoor lights.
And the business squishy crunchies. And one of the ones we had is, when birds migrate North Carolina, is the food they need to feed the baby birds available.
We were collecting crunchy and squishy foods that the birds might eat. We then recorded our numbers to see if there would be enough food for the baby birds to eat. Finding bugs and beet seeds, and we're in, and recording our data. And this is beet seed, where we would shake the tree, and the birds would, I mean, bugs would fall on the beet seed.
And the squishy food is like caterpillars and worms and stuff, and crunchy is like.
Ants.
Ants and stuff. When the dots line up to line, this means that birds are hatching at the same time as their food is available.
The line and the dots line together. When they don't line up, insects are hatching earlier or later than the baby birds are hatching.
During warm springs, insects hatch earlier, and the birds have missed their dinner. Bird banding with a map scientist. Our question is, are, how are the birds living, well, are there birds living in Tisney Farm ready to migrate? What kind do they have? Do they have enough fat? What species are there? And so on and so forth.
Catching, branding, studying, and releasing birds. Birds, we catch birds and miss net, and that's miss net. And scientists took their index finger and the middle finger and grasped bird's neck tight enough for it not to get out, but loose enough for the bird to move.
Scientists also identified the kind of bird, whether it was male or female, they used, they measured the mass of the bird, and they took a straw and blew into the bird's feathers. And if it had a little soft spot on the top of its head, still there, that would mean it's younger, but if it was closed up, then it was still, then it was older, because the skull hasn't formed yet. They also measured the wingspan, and put a band around its ankles, kind of like a license plate. So if the place that it's migrating to finds it, they can record that that bird migrated safely to the area.
Once over that, has been collected, recorded, they let it choose bird. And one of them won, how old are they?
What? What? Give it here. Is that a bird? No. They will know the, know how. They're.
Ear fish, fishy fishy.
Right, show them.
Do you wanna? Yeah, I'll do it.
Okay.
So. You have your finger like a, and you put it around, and this is like bird's neck, and you put it like that.
That's what I'm saying.
Make your rest longer, and you wrap it around the bird's body.
I wouldn't never would be old that way. Very still.
And in closing, I do want to thank the citizens for, again, providing the buses and allowing us to take this trip. It really is just, at the end of the year, a lot of times, kids have one of those favorite field trips that they take all year. And I love that they're able to, that every single sixth grader in our school is able to take this trip and have this experience, so it's very much appreciated.
If you would, have them introduce themselves and tell us what break they're in.
Absolutely, yeah, y'all, stand up and introduce yourselves.
Maria, you can start right here, okay?
I'm Katie Thompson, and I'm also in sixth grade.
I'm Ryan Bowers, and I'm sixth grade.
I'm JD Valentine, I'm also in sixth grade.
I'm Ray.
I'm Colby Hirsch, and I'm in sixth grade.
I'm Carter King, and I'm sixth grade.
I'm Riley Stormer, the one and only, and Christian.
I'm Alex Gilbert.
I'm Jackson Key, I'm sixth grade.
I'm Isaiah Yon, and I'm sixth grade.
Great job, yeah.
Thank you, Miss Stormer.
I have something to say, but they speak very well. They not only are reading it, but it's something to the great interest and they're learning it. And I know some of them are very shy. They are articulated it very well and they didn't just read it, they actually can tell there's an interest in it. So I don't know who is doing this, but I would say somebody's doing a big job and they are, they spoke very well. And lots of sixth grader are not even do that. And I know the shy one probably going to have a.
Yeah, thank you for bringing that up.
But I put this together. I mean, they helped put this presentation together. So they were, they were charged with, put down what you'd learned and they worked on it together.
Well, I should have learned some. I hadn't said.
I lived here seventy-two years and, I mean, I was in the woods for half of that or better. I didn't know about just bugs and butterflies and all this stuff.
Well, come out, join us next year.
Can you survive off a wall of potatoes and then you?
You think it's perfectly careful the bug making that school are as good as they are. Appreciate it. They can, well, look, we'll suspend, they will be. This is a time for public community.
Oh, I put it outside, I could get it. I really did put it outside. She got it, she got it.
The already named, I've been, thank you, sir. Already named on the side of the sheet, but against the, they may not recognize. So is there anyone here this time that would like to address the board or anything that not be in your mind? So now's your opportunity, if we'd asked if you would, stand up, introduce yourself and we will listen. Is there anyone at this time with, would like to address? Going, going, gone. The talks will move on. Dr. Baldwin was saying, we have Sheriff Pollard here and he came for a special citizen service, which is to talk about one program that he has. So with the force commission, we'd like to lift him up and let him talk. And if you, as you look at the agenda, y'all noticed on our information, there was an active shooter supposedly coming up. So I'll let Dr. Baldwin say it then, but we'll let you, Sheriff Pollard, let him.
I'd just like to thank Sheriff Baldwin for helping to bring this to Bacon County. I think it's very good information for our school system about board members figuring. I'll let Mr. Sheriff Baldwin explain exactly what he wants.
Basically, a year, year and a half ago, I was appointed to the governor's task force on safety schools. And in this last year, year and a half, different agencies and probably only you all and your teachers knows of all the different resources that work in our school system. And brought all those different organizations together through the, through this task force. And we found some, some holes that we needed to fix. And one of those holes was that you have a lot of things that go on within your school where you, you train, take, do drills for different events. But the one key point that is being left out from across the state is that those different organizations work together for the event something does happen. That's whether it happens here or it happens in Jackson County or Swen County. Because the reality of it is, those resources that they have in those counties, just like we have in our counties, they're going to be coming to help us, we're going to be going to help them. And so one of the things that they were doing is they held this symposium in five locations across the state. And the last one was in Asheville, which was recognized as western North Carolina. And so I went back and reminded that western North Carolina exists about two and a half hours farther west. And so I've offered to host the event, have the same exact event. We're going to have it. It's, you've got the flyers on, it's not open to the public. It's only all those participations, participants that are involved and play a role within the school system, law enforcement, first responders, who would be responding to that call. We've sent letters to all the sheriffs, chiefs, superintendents in western North Carolina. We haven't sent it to all the school board members of the other counties. So I would welcome you, I'm sending them to you. You'll be getting them in the mail. And I would just ask you before that to your fellow board members in other counties. I'm just one person, I'm doing it by myself, so I haven't had the opportunity to get it to everybody. But because we're having this in our county, I would really like to see a good representation. Me and Mr. Baldwin and his staff, me regularly, this is important to him as well. I'd just like for them to be, this is being offered everywhere in the state, five different locations. And the most that anybody's attended is ninety-two people during one session. You had three people from Bacon County in that session. So already, we have probably seventy people from Bacon County already, which is the class. So I hope for a great turnout. It's November tenth and it's from eight to five. And I want to forewarn you, my wife made sure that I forewarned you of this. It's different areas, as you see, there's, there's, it's not even the same as mine, but there's different areas. So if you come in the morning or you come in the afternoon, you may have to sit there and listen to something that has nothing to do with you. But you're there for a reason and that's to learn what we have to do. Just like when, when there's a portion of it that will talk about what the school system does, it's important for those officers and those law enforcement first responders to see what your responsibility is. And then what we're going to do, me and Mr. Baldwin have already talked about this sometime in the very near future, we're going to have a wide scale with all the different agencies doing mock drill. And that's going to take a lot, that's going to take months to prepare for. And you know, the chances of something like this that we read about happening here is probably very slim. But the one thing we don't want to have happen is have something happen and that we're not prepared for it. And only those in the school systems, usually the administrations, don't have any time that's actually been prepared. And so we want to do everything we can to be proactive. And I appreciate it.
So if we can't say, we have to wait about three o'clock or something.
You're more than welcome to do.
Because I would, I think it's a great thing to stay in if you win.
I just, what I don't want to have happen is, and I'm forewarning you is, I don't want people to come and say, well, gosh, this doesn't have nothing to do with me. And then like, really, there's, there's important aspects of the whole thing. And it makes you also understand what the other person is doing. And far too often, we all do it in our own profession, we want to tell the other profession how to do their job, which is common practice. And unfortunately, that's true. And this is a chance for us to get together, come, where all the stakeholders in us, work together and see what there is. And then also be able to have discussions. We have our own safety schools task force that we have in our county. And be able to come back and discuss on issues that we have to discuss.
And you're saying that, you know, that it's a good chance this might not happen. But every time you do something like this, is this not helping to make sure that chance stays smaller? Does this not help prevent also because you're being aware of whatever?
I think so.
Well, in other ways, we're down town. They need to make the.
Prevention, I think prevention is key. And I could go on, over all sorts of statistical wisdom, I would be so proud of it, but it doesn't matter to me if I'm going to that for just the general public. It would, it would really worry you sometimes. And that's why I know some of these things, like Mr. Baldwin knows some of these things. And that's why I'm very proactive and I agree with him. Yeah, it's like you have a school resource officer assigned to every school. And we're also starting to work with the college and also the daycareers that are close to this.
Thank you, Sheriff Paul.
Thank you.
Good day, thanks for my life. I hope all of us take advantage. We appreciate it. I think I remind you, there is, the state does not stop at Ashville.
Absolutely. We keep trying to tell them that. They don't listen most of the time.
Does talk. Moving on, section three, overnight of district trip request. I think towards that ten figures though, we did have the one addition, we're adding for girls across country. Any questions? I'm going to approve in a second. All of your favorites, if I'm saying aye, you oppose, so moved. Fundraiser request, we'll recognize each one, but I'll have you do, if you don't mind, is give us all of ones for your school and we'll approve those en masse rather than each separate. Mr. Lynch, Cardu J.
Cardu J PTO would like to ask approval for, we have two coming up. One in November, the first week of November, is a celebrating home catalog sale, more home decor and candle sales. And then the second one would be a gingerbread family night from six to eight P.M., the twelfth of December. All of the items used to make the little houses will be donated from Ingles, Kmart, places like that. Five dollars will get each family in the door, whether that be two individuals or ten individuals. That includes supplies, cookies, drinks for the evening.
I would like a motion to accept as presented, and I also want to say what an awesome idea on that gingerbread. Not only are you raising funds, but getting families to sit down and do something together. So I think that is an awesome way to do it, please.
A motion approved, a second. Second, all in favor, say aye. You oppose, so moved. Ms. Parks.
I'm speaking for Ms. Parks.
Okay.
Um, we have two from our East Franklin PTO. The first one is our Santa Shop. That's on December, from December seventeenth through the nineteenth, that's where the children come in and purchase things for their family members. We've done it in years past and they love it. And all the children are given an opportunity to get something. Um, we also have our Family Craft Night, December the fifth, and it's free for our children that'll be making Christmas craft crafts.
I'd like a motion to approve as presented.
A motion approved, a second. Want to say on in favor, say aye. You oppose, so moved. Breckin High School, Mr. Witty.
Yes, sir. First one, our JV and varsity baseball team, going to be selling the game cards. It's the same thing I've done for the past four years. We don't know which we'll have yet, but like I said, it's close to start in February. And the next one, our Skills USA, they have them go to different regions. They're going to be doing a golf tournament, going to be at the, meet at the Country Club at Mill Creek. Uh, next is going to be.
Sorry, Mr. Witty, you have that?
Saturday, April eighteenth. Right, that's a potential date, but I hadn't put it for sure, definitely on that one.
And what is Skills? I should know, but I don't.
Skills, that's our welding and our carpentry, our CT, negative state competitions. And we've had national qualifications last two years, so.
I knew I shouldn't have, I should have liked it.
Uh, next one's our AP, government AP history class. They want to do a bake sale and sell poncetas. This is for their trip to Washington, D.C. in the spring with Macon Early College. FBLA, Ms. Brooks sent all of hers at one time. They're going to be raising funds for state competitions. They have a yard sale. And they're going to have a businesses is going to sponsor them for state competitions. A fat's restaurant, a fat buddy's restaurant, and a colon cancer awareness, they're going to be doing that, selling tickets for that for the Wade Hayes concert.
The only question I have was on the businesses, what were you going to go, how were you going to raise money?
The FBLA, she's got like six different things to raise money on. Oh, the sponsorship for that, she's probably going to be doing sponsorships. They got people going to sponsorship for them to go to state competitions.
I'd like a motion to accept all fundraisers asked presented by Ms. Joy.
A second, any other questions? I mean, all in favor, say aye. You oppose, so moved. All the fundraisers, Mr. Jeter.
The first two are cheerleading fundraisers. Um, T-shirts simply, companies donating money and getting their name on the T-shirt and so forth. Um, they'll be selling spiritware. The next two are fifth grade, the frozen, the flamingos aren't actually frozen, it's kind of moving. Anyway, that's for their Charleston trip. Beta Club is high school. Uh, they have a, a simple fundraiser, a number up in Penny Ward's, Fifty Fifty Raffle, Luminaries, and a PTO dinner. Where we got junior class, pizza sales, fruit sales at Christmas, candy and flower sales, car washes. Finally, the middle school student government wants to help the community society.
I'm, I'm motion to accept all fundraisers asked presented by Mr. Jeter.
Second. Any other questions?
Will you deliver this flamingos to Franklin?
It's not a good thing to get a flamingo apparently. You have to pay to get it out of your yard.
Or do a lot some.
My yard has had one in it several times, shall we say, so I'm going to.
Yeah, you love it. They're bringing the Franklin, I will deliver them.
Only question I have, Mr. Jeter, is none of these involve students door to door. We have a motion to, to accept, if we have a second. All in favor, say aye. You oppose, so moved. Mrs. Bell.
Good evening.
And let me, to be grateful, I think this is Mrs. Bell's first appearance before the board as our new principal. Here, and look for big things, nothing like to put a little pressure on you, so there you go.
Appreciate it. So tonight, our PTO has requested, these are our fundraisers for this, hopefully for the entire year, and selling of T-shirts and spiritware, the bracelets and mugs and magnets for cars. Tomorrow night, we're hoping to host our showcase of talent for Isle Valley, taking donations at the door to go towards our PE program. Santa Shop, I believe is the second week in December, and that's where the kids get chocolate to families. In the spring, they'd like to host a walkathon within the building. Again, that, the money will go towards PE, the PE program. Our spring festival, that first week in May, I believe. Zaxby's Night, that date is to be determined. Our PTO needs to get a tax number in order to do that, so they're in the process of working on that. And then the last fundraiser is the Reading for Education, which some of the other schools do, to involve the postcards for magazines. And so there's no door to door selling on that. Our kids just turn in addresses of family members that might be interested in renewing magazine subscriptions.
So it's located where?
It is at the gym tomorrow night.
Gym there at.
At Isle.
Okay.
Six thirty.
Any, any questions of Ms. Bell?
What is the PE, the PE trouble this year?
Uh, just replacement of material, of equipment that has, you know, replacing balls that are no longer.
Okay, I was sure. Um, and you'll get back to Renee about a study for Zaxby's?
Yes, as soon as we have the required tax number.
Okay, just to reference what we're looking at in the second case, we can possibly shorty. I make a motion to accept all fundraisers asked presented by Mrs. Bell.
Second. Want to say, any other questions? Not being any, all in favor, say aye. Of course, people say aye. You oppose, so moved. Making Middle School, Mr. Maslin.
FBLA, Mr. O'Barrett's here, but I'm going to save time and I'm just going to do this one. Fundraiser wanted to have a dance, partnered with Gilliam's Hope, you know, split the profits with them. As you can see, they're five dollars to get a ticket, get a drink, two slices of pizza. And also, they're also wanting to do a fundraiser, we're selling Stoney Creek coffee, there's a fifty percent profit on the coffee. The next one, if I'm not mistaken, is for our Sixth Flag, seventh grade. This year, seventh grade is going to be doing the Sixth Flag. Eighth grade is working on. Eighth grade is working on another plan for a different activity. But all those things, all that is, is that kids love to wear their hats and pajamas to school, so what happens is they pay a dollar and they, they get to wear it. So it's, um, paying a dollar to break the rules, basically. And then the next one is, um, Ms. Burt, I've noticed on this one from Ms. Thornton, the heading says FCA fundraisers. She's got that they're gonna have the usual fast pancake breakfast to raise money for, um, Thanksgiving and Christmas families. And then they have a factory lock-in and the money is gonna go to the Stan, um, the Stan Youth Rally. But I'm looking at the bottom and I didn't see those field trip requests on there. Did you at the same time where?
She's gonna submit those as normal.
Okay, so we're good on that?
Yeah.
Okay. And, um, other than that, we're good to go. And that's Dr. Paul, and you didn't want me to speak about the other.
Well, I should make the board aware of donors choose. The, uh, metal will just...
Well, donors choose, we're trying to, I'm looking still into it, but donors choose, you go in there and you make, create a website, teachers do. And, um, on this, it's sort of like a wedding registry. I guess that's the closest thing I can say. You can go in there and say, we need twenty books for math, they're ten dollars and nine and nine cents a piece. And then people can donate, um, to that, and it keeps a track of it and actually creates you a webpage. And you can put pictures on there, kids using them and thank yous and, um...
We have teachers making kind of our own dollars too, but I just want to make it more aware of it. And it, you know, it's a way that teachers can find any money. So you're supposed to be approved as presented.
A motion, or a second. Okay. Any other questions of, from Mr. Matt? There being none, all in favor, say aye. You oppose. So moved.
Mr. Chairman, may I also, to take this time, he said Dylan's, uh, Pope, I would just like to, um, get the board to pay off late and just get a amazing lady on us after hospital week ago, and I'd like to...
Just checking.
And that's one of the four there that they've done a lot of...
Making, making the community and making the...
I would like to show a lovely, um, but she was surrounded by family friends and just like, and maybe like, she felt secure where she was.
And on this, Judy Sprinkle, I'm not sure if y'all are aware, she's a long time sub at Macon Middle School and, um, coached her son and taught her son, and, um, she passed away just one of a heart attack. Um, about six thirty this morning, so, um, people, family thoughts and prayers.
So it was a heart attack.
That's what we were told, yes.
Um, you had some time, I'm sure. It's another loss to, um, you know, to fix your parents' school for a substitute. Uh, really good people, everybody is. Not in the immediate, Mr. Sutton.
Uh, Zaxby's Night is what we did before, and she said we made a record. I'm not sure what that is, but, uh, last time around two hundred and seventy-five dollars, and she was wanting to do it again. So we may probably wait till after Christmas to do that, but I'll announce the date later, if that's okay. Uh, they, PTO also wanted to sell pencils during the morning time, something that Cartic J is doing. And I'm trying to talk to the third one, Doug Daven, the principal, it was painful, and we didn't make a lot of money last time, but they apparently enjoyed watching the paint, so. I don't know about that one, but we wanted to go ahead and get it approved just in case.
Somebody I think they'll take place.
I'd like to invite Ms. Bell back if she'd like to take my spot.
I have some notes to take here.
You can't buy it.
There wasn't enough tape. But if I had some stuff...
I'm a pretty heavy guy, takes a lot of tape, so bring your own.
Any other questions? Not, or your motion to approve?
I make a motion.
Very second. All in favor, say aye. You oppose. So moved. Last but not least, Mr. Bryan, name of the halers.
Mr. Chairman, remember before we had a parent from our kindergarten first grade, uh, class who wants to donate fifty percent of her commissions from candle sales and would just like permission to send the, uh, forms home with the children. They will not be doing the sales, the parents will, and she will also have an online site listed on that, uh, on that information. And, uh, so every candle that's sold, she will donate her profits to the school, her kindergarten first grade classroom supplies.
Very good. Any questions, Mr. Bryan? Not, or your motion?
Approved.
Motion to approve, and a second. All in favor, say aye. You oppose. So moved.
I'd like to say one thing. Just, I know you've seen it advertised or whatever, the Ford deal, Mr. Woody, kind of stated up. Uh, uh, Sheila Pendleton, now went out there, it's not due to the food club, but we make popcorn or whatever, and we reached our goal of three hundred people, probably the easiest six thousand dollars we've ever made, and we'll do it again in the spring, hopefully. Uh, all you had to do was go to test drive, and even that night, we set up a ballgame, couldn't test drive at night, but as long as you made an effort and signed their little paper or whatever, so, uh, I guess we could've done it before, but Mary had to know about it and brought it up. I think the first is going to academics, and we're maybe doing it again in the spring and if it goes sports, so, uh, it was a good deal. We'll thank Frank and Ford, put that out.
Very good. For those that don't know, the Ford sponsorship, Mr. Woody, correct?
It's correct, yeah. It's, uh, it's been a program about, it's about ten years in. It's called Drive Before You School. Actually Franklin Ford Motor, Franklin Motor Company, I mean Franklin Ford did it, but the actual sponsorship comes from Ford Motor Company itself. Like I said, we do appreciate Tommy and Sheila setting up and helping us with that and everything, and, uh, it's something I was familiar with before, and I called Mr. Rowers on Franklin Ford, know we're all about it, so we hope to make that a continued venture of Ford Motor Company.
Worked out good, though, I didn't realize I couldn't drive off the parking lot with the kids. We came into town, they called us at your ramp sign with that car. You're a good person.
Well, we can...
Yeah, I can.
Very good. Moving on to personnel, we have sections A, B. Got my B, I think C, D, and is there an E? I don't think so. E, all the board members have had a chance to review those. Are there any questions or concerns on any of those sections?
I have a motion, please. Please say this.
All the, all the sections, Mr. Shields, correct?
I'm gonna put them on the...
So we have a motion, we approve, on the, all personnel, all, all the, uh, A through E. Any other questions? Not, all in favor, say aye. You oppose. So moved. Section F eighty, ongoing interviews. Mr. Bell, any updates on those, please?
So we're doing for school psychologists, as we have been since the first day at school. The, uh, both positions at Macon Middle School has just recently, uh, come about, as opposed in regard to your previous vote, it just came open. And, uh, bus drivers is an ongoing problem for us. We are desperate with the bus drivers, um, we're having these custodians running out there doing some decisions to handle.
This is a state legislation, a lot of those systems, uh, that we've done a ton of time in.
Wake County have a, the email you sent, Wake County had several buses parked in Wake County. They cannot find cars.
And we've had to park one at Land Hospital a hundred times in the last few weeks.
Yes, we have, we make parks. Well, once we've had a park bus, we've been, so... We don't have the, we don't, you gotta first get the interest before you can skip your license. Does that make the minutes run that year or bus? That's sake of bus, so we got to do, does that make, uh, excuse me, three, four, three?
But Woody, have, have y'all been addressing that, that parked bus?
One fifty-five. We're, uh, Mr. Lynch has worked with us and used a lot of his buses to run that bus throughout the mornings. Afternoons, we've been using custodians as well, myself and Mr. Reese have driven that bus as well.
But it's not making students late, is it?
No, the mornings, it's, it's capable mornings, the other drivers, I think it, once five minutes getting there, Mr. Lynch says she was still within the timeframe, done votes, we've been fine in the mornings.
But obviously there are more students on those other buses.
But in the afternoon, it's just too full to try to put those students on another bus.
Hopefully we find some somewhere. Anything else, Mr. Bell?
Yep.
Not moving forward on section five under policy, remember our understanding, reach of Macon County.
How is she doing that to present that first?
Well, yes, sir. Um, I'm stepping in for, um, my assistant director, Jennifer Perlin. Um, if any, if any of you all have any questions, um, regarding that MOU, I'd be glad to try to answer some of those, and ones I can't, she will be glad to answer those for you.
Has any of you had time to update with this other?
Um, I have not actually, and for whatever reason, my legs and my, uh, agenda have not been working. But I think that we have had a similar one in the past. Can you just hold it in what Macon? Um... Yeah, I don't have any concern with any of that. It's all sort of collaborative in a, um, educational, you know, to, to, what is gonna be presented in an educational format that applies to reaching goals, but doesn't have anything to do with any individual students or any that sort of information, so that's, it's good to have.
Motion approved.
Motion approved, or a second.
Second.
Motion, all in favor, say aye. You oppose. So moved. Political psychologist contractor. This letter.
Yes, uh, this is a contract with Dr. Reva Belue. She has agreed to, um, help us out with some of our testing until we can bang the school psychologist. Um, she was recommended by Jackson County, they've used her on contract basis in the past as well.
Make a motion to accept tests for any of our citizens, Dr. Collins.
A motion, go here, second.
Okay.
Any other questions? In all in favor, say aye. You oppose. So moved. Vision Board Policy Eight Ten, we're gonna use the school facilities, Mr. Henny.
Mr. Chairman, as we discussed, uh, your Highlands meeting, um, really there are some fairly severe liability reasons, but you need to have a fairly thorough policy on use of, community use of school facilities. When third parties use your facilities, you'd want them to be under a agreement that you have required through policy. Um, that is essentially, our existing policy wasn't sufficient to do that. Uh, and for that reason, I'm recommending, uh, you adopt this policy. This is essentially the School Business Association policy, just tweaked to fit our, um, some of our existing unique policies. I'm happy to answer any questions on behalf of that, but, so, fair and straightforward.
Motion approved.
It does, this is approved as the first reading. Is that correct?
Would you have anybody who wants to do, if we're going to, if we're going to, to now, we can text this day forth, right?
Functionally, we have been doing, and I know this is as clear as mine, but we have been doing the things that you're required to understand law, we just didn't have it spelled out in policy. And if anybody did have a, uh, a request to use facilities, we would make sure that they, if they're a third party, that we are under contract, they do have insurance and all of that sort of thing, but, so for that reason, I don't think you need to, to skip the first reading.
Okay. First reading, so... Is that true? I guess I was asking, was it a certain reading or was your question to a thought?
I'll do it again, I'll do these things, but, wait till next time.
Okay. A motion to approve, the change in the first reading. Any other questions, Mr. Henny? Not have a second to approve this reading, all in favor, say aye. You oppose. So moved. Uh, first reading, Board Policy Eight Hundred, sale disposal, lease of board-owned real property. Mr. Henny.
We do not have this policy. Um, it essentially is just a restatement of the law on sale disposal, lease of board-owned real property, but it's, it's referenced in, uh, policy eight ten that I just presented to you. Because the policy eight ten that you just approved on first reading, uh, authorizes superintendent to enter into leases less than a year. Now that is, again, is essentially, is, is, uh, a feature of state law. If we had situations that we like we had in the past with the archery group and things like that, your, the new policy eight ten, if you approve it next month, will allow your superintendent to enter into those without them having to come before the board. But that gets to be a little cumbersome for us to work out, uh, if they have to come to multiple board meetings. So for that reason, you know, this policy would define everything else that you do with school property. Again, it, it essentially is just a recitation of state law on school board ownership property.
Questions, Mr. Henny? Not in the technical, any motion?
Motion, first reading, we accept. Second.
A motion to second, we accept this as the first reading. All in favor, say aye. You oppose. So moved. Uh, Ms. Thifton, two thousand fourteen fifteen, CACFP food reimbursement application.
We're just asking for approval of our CACFP, um, application. We do a, and it also includes the contract with child nutrition, provide the snacks for after school.
This is standard, uh, plan.
Yeah.
Any questions, ring board member? If not, I'm gonna take a motion.
Motion to approve.
A motion, second. All in favor, say aye. You oppose. So moved. Very good. Curriculum Title One Update, Ms. Arnold.
Yes, um, on October the twenty-first, uh, the Department of Public Instruction, um, congratulated seventy-eight Title One schools that were recognized by the state of North Carolina as being Title One reward schools. Um, of those seventy-eight schools, I'm pleased to announce that we had two schools in Macon County, Cartic J Elementary and South Macon. Um, a Title One reward school is a school that is based on the most recent data available, and it's identified as being, uh, one of the highest, uh, highest ten percent of all Title One schools. And our school was recognized in the area of highest performing school, which it means, which in essence means that the school had the highest absolute performance over a number of years for all children and all subgroups. Um, this is an honor. There are hundreds of schools, elementary schools in the state of North Carolina, seventy-eight were recognized, and of the seventy-eight schools, two of them belong to Macon County. So I think that these two schools should be applauded. Um, let me say also that our other schools are working very hard, uh, very, very close. Um, and hopefully, next year, I'll have seven schools to report to you as being Title Ones.
That's your goal, is that your goal?
That's my goal.
That's good, yeah.
Let me, um, and with that being said, I wanted to just give you a brief update. All of our federal grant applications, Title One, um, Title Two, which stands for teacher, um, improving teacher quality, and our rural low-income schools application, all three applications have been submitted, um, and they all have been approved for funding. Um, a, a part of that, that we do not receive funding for, is the McKinney Vento program, and that program focuses on providing services for homeless children. At this point in time, we have surveyed and we do annually for Macon County schools, we've identified, uh, of course, it'll fluctuate with children moving in, approximately eleven children that may be doubled up, living in campers or, or et cetera. The definition of being homeless is that they lack a fixed adequate, uh, residence, nighttime residence. And so we've identified these children, and I would also like to say that the principals have been very supportive and helpful in helping with this, find this information and locate these children, as well as the, a great team, Marcy Holland and Annie Wishon. I mean, I, we couldn't do without those two. Those two girls are in all schools, and they are really, really working with our parents and our, um, community members to find resources. Some of the resources we're using with these children include, uh, lunch, the lunch, school lunch program, breakfast, um, and making sure all the kids have the necessary school supplies to be successful and be like all, I mean, be like all the other kids. So, anyway, that's been going very, very well. And lastly, one of the things that I have intertwined within our application, our application is a consolidated applic, federal application. Uh, Title One is for economically disadvantaged youth, uh, Title Two, which is for improving teacher quality. Uh, you, with, uh, what I did was I would take different objectives and show planned relationships between all three programs. And that's the intent of the program, is to be a comprehensive application. And as I said, and it was approved, and what we were trying to do in Macon County, we're trying to develop some district procedures. In the past, the grant application was very, very good, and as stated by the reward schools, our test scores are very good and continue to improve. But one of the things we see that we would like to do, and with our district scores, to try to do some, have some consistency for all schools with procedural guidelines. With that, we have a central district wide committee that we meet and talk about different issues, such as interventions, enrichment activities, and et cetera for all kids, and then bring that down and drill down to the school level. We are having grade level meetings. We started this last fall and began our grade level meetings with our teachers. They're very, very excited. State Department employees have visited Macon County schools. We have shared information with what the state requirements and federal requirements are, but yet they're able to share information with each other. Our strength will be within ourselves.
Is that countywide?
And it is countywide, all teachers at each grade level. It really has been very, very good. I'd like to commend Kim Burnett and Carrie Horton. They have been very instrumental in trying to, in bringing this together as well. I can tell you that we have a full team approach. And what we are doing is looking at K through three literacy. We're looking at the reading programs and trying to develop new initiatives and continue with the old initiatives as well, but then we're going to migrate into the math curriculum as well. So I just wanted to give you a brief update, the Reader's Digest version, of what I'm trying to do and what our teachers are doing and our principals are supporting in order to improve achievement and have our kids ready for the read, to achieve at third grade level and to continue on up to the intermediate grades. So, and I want to thank you for your support as well.
Thank you very much, Carol. Any questions, Carol? Moving on, Department of Innovative High School Programs, Macon Early Colleges, Gibbs.
Yes, sir. Every five years, the North Carolina Department of Public Works intention and higher ed partners intention, Southwestern Community College in this case, trying to determine every five years if they're still willing to continue on the partnership that MEC benefits from. We're not quite at our second cycle of five years. The end of my first year was the end of the first five year cycle that was started with the grant that Nancy and Dr. Shotwell and Paula created. At the end of my first year, that was the end of the five years. We did one of these four years ago. You guys, the board signed it, Community College signed it. It was sent to North Carolina DPI where they lost it. Yet we continue to get funding over the last four years. So we're a little bit early with this new one here, but it will take us for the next five years. And again, just DPI determining whether the school board wants to continue with the partnership with Southwestern Community College that benefits MEC.
Motion approved, can hear in a second. Any other questions, Mr. Gibbs? All in favor, somebody saying aye. You opposed, so moved. College Career Principles update, Ms. Gantrell.
Well, piggybacking on Mr. Gibbs a little bit, we looked at some of the figures for this fall in students that were taking college courses. So SCC and Tri-County Community College, because a lot of the Natahala students take advantage of the classes there. We figured out that these students are taking a total, now this is just this far, remember, of eighteen hundred semester hours. And if you figure seventy-five dollars per hour, this is a savings of a hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars that we're saving parents. This doesn't include books. Now, MEC, I believe, spends about ten thousand a semester.
Oh, no, it's, oh, per semester?
Yes.
Last year, we spent a total of forty-four thousand dollars in that expense.
Yeah. So that's just, that's not even adding books on. But anyway, I just wanted to give you a total of, Macon Early College students are saving their parents a hundred, about a hundred and three thousand dollars. Highlands students, five thousand four hundred and seventy-five. Natahala students, two thousand four hundred and seventy-five. And Franklin High School, twenty-four thousand dollars. So they're getting a jump start on their college education while they're in high school.
Just to add to that, these figures are based on the student's desire to go to a community college. These same college credits would apply to other North Carolina universities. So these, these savings could be much more than a hundred and thirty, a hundred and three thousand dollars in Macon Early College. For instance, what's a college credit hour? I think, I think Western's up to three hundred dollars a credit hour. Three hundred dollars a credit hour, about nine hundred dollars per class. And that's, that's, I'm sorry, that's public, that's state. You look at Marcell, Bravard, Wake Forest, Duke, it's going to be exorbitantly higher than that.
Minimum of trip that they go to.
So thanks to our community colleges and our high schools that are taking advantage of this, I think that we're on a good track. We see this continuing to grow.
Any questions? Thank you. Highlands Country Club Buses, Mr. Bell.
This request comes from the Highlands Country Club. It's my understanding that for the past few years, this has been something that you all have given your permission for the use of the, those two buses up there, provided they use our driver.
And I would just encourage, I shouldn't do encourage, but the country club, I think, above the arms of the school and please helping us to get that last renovation match, so I mean, to help them, let them use this.
Motion to approve, you second. All in favor, somebody saying aye. You opposed, so moved. Union Academy, there's school carpet bid updates, Mr. Bell.
I'll give it to Tracy for the panel. The first bid that came in that we, our starting point that you approved and said, let's come on to that, Mr. Bob got that again, and it was twenty-two hundred and ninety-six dollars under the first bid. So now we're looking at twenty-four thousand two hundred and thirteen plus tax on it. So thanks to carpet orders.
Yes, for both.
That's for both, that's for Union and Natahala.
Next, let's clarify, what we had for him wasn't really a bid.
Well, that was just kind of a starting point.
Starting point, we didn't actually have another bid, and we resubmitted bids on those, and then he lost.
What was that bid again?
Total for both schools is twenty-four thousand two hundred and thirteen plus tax.
So when will you be installed, a rule to be installed?
We will start that schedule soon. We're going to have to do it in phases, and I got to get Mr. Bob crazy. But my plan is to go to Highlands, I mean, Natahala, and talk with James and see what works for him, and then at Union, we're going to do it hopefully in, at different levels. We can do certain sections of the building without disruption of class, and then hopefully try to avoid disruption by being in the hallways.
So you plan on starting it?
I would have it all done by first of January.
Awesome.
Tracy, give me that figure again, twenty-four?
Total for both, twenty-four thousand two hundred and thirteen.
Plus tax.
Plus tax.
We have a proposal from the submit that we accept the, Mr. Bob's, for twenty-four thousand two hundred and thirteen plus tax, and install carpet updates. So I hear motion to approve. Very second. Motion, second, all in favor, somebody saying aye. You opposed, so moved. Good. Don't think we have any complaints. Land Resource Center, Mr. Bell or Tracy, update on the Owens House?
Okay, the, as we call it, the Owens House, where Gary lived, and we're in question about property, we started using his old residence as a office area for the high school care and summer adventure program, and also for our school social workers. What has happened over time, first of all, let me say, the original part of that house was built nineteen oh four, and the original part of the house is framed, just like you'd frame a barn. There's no stud walls in that original part of the, of the box, and Gary had owned the house probably all the way around, it's been sixty degrees around, you add onto it. The floor of the house, the core of the house is sitting on Locust Post, with the rocks stuck on the Locust Post, and the subfloor is, is giffy. You, you go in there and walk on the floor, it's like walking on a trampoline.
And that's not because?
Not quite.
That's, that's another story.
That's another story, I'm getting to that. And we've had some issues with plumbing and some leaks, and it's not been real, real good, hasn't been long. And so, while we're having, our schools are inspected by the Fire Marshal every year, you have to go around. So just so happened this year, while he was over at MBI, he looked over the hill and he thought, is that building that I'm for? And so we told him what that building was used for, so he proceeded to go down and inspect it also.
Did you like that?
Well, that's his job, I guess. First thing he discovered was that we were using a residence as a business and we weren't permitted for that, so that was a no-no, but not a big deal. But then when he went in and started measuring doorways in the house, there's not a three door in the house, which, that means it don't comply with ADA, even though we had built a handicap ramp to it. The ramp went to a non-compliant doors. And then as he crawled under the house and started looking at the wiring, he found open junction boxes, open splashes, exposed wiring, and so he turned that down. Talking with Tracy about all this, the college was trying to bring his house up to code, it's attractive.
Going to school for what, you're going to new school problems?
Yeah, and basically right now, we have Lil Noah, and you have anybody that's working with you right now? So we've got three people housed in that, in that facility. So we have found new homes for these people. And so I guess what I'm telling you is we would like to close Owens House down, cut off utilities, save that money, like have that expenditure of repairing that house. I guess at some later date, we'll have to dispose the house in some manner, but. Well, that's, that's, you got to have it inspected before you let those folks in. You got to have it certified and all that. So I'll have to talk to the community college about that and let them buy the expense of doing that if they so choose, want to have their school back, when they have their western North Carolina fire school issue, they have to make it, and we could. Because they save some money, they basically save some money. The school social workers will relocate to Macon Middle School. Mr. Manlon has found a suitable spot for both those individuals, and we're going to do some renovation to the area, so they'll have independent offices in that building. And then Ms. Thiffton then would be relocated here to this campus here at the board execution.
I would encourage us to do something to place that, because it'll turn into bad news. It could be a spot when people realize there's nothing there, and it becomes an attractive nuisance. Would have gone, maybe do something, please.
I, I understand what you're saying, but even in disposal of it, there's going to be a cost. And we'll probably have to look at that for the next budget cycle. We'll be planning budget paperwork, so we can plan, plan on board updates to do it then.
Do you need our blessing?
I don't think you need a budget. We've been told we can't use it without doing these repairs, unless you want to do the repairs, then we need to close it.
How do we protect ourselves by building lives? Are we up signs?
I mean, I think, the building is perfectly lockable the way it is. It's got good doors and windows in right now, and we can keep walking on it.
We'll have to give that some thought. I don't, I don't know of any requirement that you put any signage up, and I'd hate to have it add to the nuisance, attraction, the attractiveness of it. We'll look at that.
Bruce said there's things in the house that we'll probably, we probably won't get out today.
Let's try to secure it as best we can. I think I'm totally, I think, very capable of whatever, but let's try to protect ourselves from any liability that'll be caused to the kid. That'd be, that'd be sleep a little bit easier tonight, shall we say. College Inseptic System update. Bell, gentlemen.
Uh, Tracy. Well, two days before the previous management director left, I had a meeting with him, other post agent, about septic system. And I was led to believe that there had been an approval for the septic system to be in front of us. I don't know if I took this the way I wanted to hear it, but he never take, he never took me up to the, above the building as to what has been approved. And I think you seem this in the work session that we had.
As we talked about it, we actually solved that, and I don't think we did as a matter of fact.
Okay. This is what has been approved. I told Saja, and this is a commercial septic system. This is going to cost big money to put this in, you know, you're talking about pump stations.
How much you think about that?
I don't know.
More than ten thousand?
Oh, God, shit. I would get a pump station alone, which would cost you ten thousand dollars. And then you've not got adequate power there to run a pump station. You know, you really need three phase power. Not got it there.
So what is our option?
Let's just continue as is, pray.
In your eyes, that's the way we're running it, huh?
In, in order to, there was, there was some call about putting in an alternative site which would be in front of that building. But when I contacted the health department the other day, Dr. Charles Womack, he was said that he had a conversation about, with that with the previous management supervisor about that. And basically, he told him that we'd have to go out and simply remove all the asphalt in front of the building, and then dig test pits so they could come in and then assess the soil to see if it was suitable to handle the system. So you start having to come in and dig up, I think, when you take an asphalt up, it's already in there, which somebody might want if, if you did sell that property. And then you, if you run the gamble of digging pits and then soil will perk, then, so we stopped that.
So we're back to paying the bills, a bill, or, and, and be in hopes of selling?
Selling it would be a great thing.
I, I just think, in, in the way Terry and I had talked, that if we do close down the, if we did drop the permitting on the existing treatment plant, package plant that's there, we drop the permitting on that, you'll never get it back, one thing. But if somebody buys it, then that gives them the option to put in their own system, for whatever they want. And that, I believe, is the reason nobody has wanted to buy it, because you've got this operating system and that you haven't had a licensed person to, you know.
Right, but I think pulling up parking lines, so it's going to make it an added issue. I mean, I. That's to track them, because I knew everybody uses it. And plus, I've been around enough to start pulling up stops, but who knows what's going to happen. I don't think that's going to be a good route.
Do we have a price to sell?
Twenty-eight dollars, yeah.
Were you going to make an offer?
No, but it's a price, it's, um.
I don't think we've actually ever explored that.
We tried.
We advertised it.
We advertised it.
There was a couple people that expressed interest and looked at it, but the water treatment facility was the biggest problem.
And here's another issue with that building. Anyone who wants to, who thinks they might want to buy the building for a commercial use, they're going to have to bring the building up code, which means they want to put a sprinkler system in the building if they want to use it for a commercial. That's, one of the people who looked at it seriously, found out that they'd have to put in a sprinkler system. Sprinkler system is, makes that septic system look like a cheap deal.
I mean, we'd be better off if we could sell it for almost nothing, just where we would have to pay the monthly.
It costs just about twelve thousand dollars a year.
So, I mean.
But it would make a charming home.
But it would make a charming home.
They're media here, I just...
I'm trying to sell it.
I think my boss would look good saying that, right? Break it up into power.
You'd have your own gym.
Well, and maybe, maybe did he, uh, help us out by telling, you know, putting something out there that, you know, that it is for sale and the price is right. I don't know. I don't know what the price is, but it is certainly...
I'd mention that one point, is we all talk to Tommy, Jake, is it all about trying to market that as far as EDC?
I, I do not that we all do.
So, I mean, it's obviously something.
Again, you, you run into the problem, if, if the, the EDC is, you know, if you go use it for commercial purpose, we got those sprinklers in that building, plus the sewer system wouldn't handle the need.
Like, be on seven away.
Oh, beo.
Okay, moving on, now that we, we have the, uh, the, uh, cloud, the hopeless. It's kind of unfortunate, moving on to something else that's not real good news, I don't think. Driver's education card.
Yeah, this is, this is, this is about as dark as that. Uh, and you call Dr. Ball, and I went down this afternoon in, in, in the bus garage. Uh, I took the brown, Crown Vic to the bus garage this afternoon, and they're gonna start, uh, putting in the cabling and the brake pedal on that brown, uh, Crown tomorrow. Uh, we've gotta get the current driver's head car out of commission because transmission is going, uh, it comes to a point now where they're sudden, they come to an intersection, they try to cross the highway, and they give it the gas, sometimes it don't move, it hesitates to move. And so, we're going... The, uh, the current driver's head car has a hundred and sixty-one thousand miles on it. Uh, we're gonna get him...
Five hundred thousand.
We're, we're gonna give him a, a, the Brown Crown Vic of a hundred and eighty-one thousand. But I, I drive it, 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 it's been well maintained and and I have, uh, I feel like the, the Brown one will, will do the job for him, and we're going to try to keep his current car here and put it back in his hands.
As a repair, what's the cost of it?
Uh, we're gonna send about two, two thousand dollars repaired. That's minimum.
I, I think somewhere near, uh, the driver's education, I think it come up.
It's, it's moved its way up on our, on our, um, capital outlay priority, shall we say?
Yes.
We're gonna have a league, I mean, maybe, I'm gonna have a league for it, so I wouldn't invest it in you.
No, not, not right now at all.
Right. We really, there's a lot of question mark around drivers ed. We're certainly not something we're looking to replace in a good form due to those question marks. But at the same time, we don't know what our, what the school system's role is gonna be in driver's education in fifteen, sixteen.
Certainly in the next budget cycle, we're gonna have to address, uh, a vehicle of some sort if we continue.
Yeah, we're gonna need, we're gonna need, we're gonna need a car in the future anyway.
Okay.
All, all our vehicles have about a hundred and sixty-five thousand miles.
So, we, we know about that? Well, can you, so you feel secure using this, I'll be on there, she thinks, okay, until we know?
We're, we're, we're gonna do the switch, we're gonna start switching tomorrow, and they, they should be able to, they have everything they need for the car I took down there to equip it. So, by the end of the week, we oughta have that other car in the shop, get the transmission replaced.
And then by the time we start doing the budget, we don't know whether or not we need, because I mean, it's something we have to do. We have to have safety for the kids, and our kids need a way to drive, so, but like you said, fix that one till we can.
Well, and the brown car we're, we're re-quicking was the driver's head car previously, and we took it out. He didn't want, he doesn't have to, we're still back on the one hand, so.
Recycling.
Recycling.
I'll ask this question, this was, uh, in, in Dr. Ball, when mine is, and is, even though the funding may be cut by statute, we do, we have to continue offering drivers ed, correct?
Yes, and until, yes, it just might become an unfunded mandate.
Unfunded, so...
I want to do it anyway, though.
Oh, yeah, we do, I was just saying, but it's gonna continue, so even if we do, we'll have to prioritize.
I think there's some idea that they want, there are some interests in the state in having sort of privately provided drivers ed. I don't know if that, that'll be, that may be the option.
The way the legislation is written, uh, the current legislation is what, is that, um, the driver's ed funding will no longer be provided out of the highway fund, but the General Assembly has directed local education, so the agencies to fund that on other sources. I don't know if they didn't stipulate what other sources were, and we're not able to find those, but... They've also given us the, a permission to raise the, um, charge, the fee, sixty-five dollars. At sixty-five dollars per student, we have over three hundred students making calendar in the ninth grade right now. That's how the funding's based, current funding is based on the, on the ninth grade A D U. Over three hundred students in the ninth grade, multiplied by sixty-five dollars per student, you're looking at around twenty-four thousand dollars. We're currently receiving about ninety-three thousand dollars driver's ed, so I don't know how we make up that other seventy, a thousand dollars.
That's probably, yeah.
We have to continue, then we'll have to buy exactly. That's, that's why I guess it's worth it, asking the questions. Unless things change drastically, and for, and we, we just weigh up our priorities on capital outlays, shall we say?
But even if we need to come back to that, that agency, twenty-four thousand dollars would not be enough to, to hold that true.
All right, I have one more thing here, right, quick, while, while Tracy's on this. Uh, we have been trying to clean up some areas, uh, on this campus and across the road at the county, old county garage. Uh, over time, we, we accumulate a lot of junk. Uh, I mean, a lot of junk. And so, Tracy and his guys have really worked hard, uh, they've, uh, been scrapping stuff that, uh, had no real useful purpose other than just to be scrapped. How much scrap have we done to date?
Forty-six hundred.
So, we, we, in the past, this past two, three weeks, they scrapped out forty-six hundred dollars worth of stuff.
Every time you come, Tracy, we're all telling that Tracy, we're definitely gonna get you.
Yeah, but Tracy, here comes the catch.
That was a good segue.
That, that month, that forty-six hundred dollars had to go into the, into the same fund where you have the party to take money somehow. They, uh, Angie's added to that, correct? Uh, the maintenance department is, is really in need of buying tools. I'm not talking about, you know, everything from small tools on up to, to medium-sized tools, drills, things that, that, that are just about worn out. It needs to be scrapped off, over there now. And so, what I'm, what I'm asking is if you can see your way to take that forty-six hundred dollars that had been put into that fund and let Angie reallocate it into a line where Tracy now can go out and, uh, buy, have a fund that, so he can buy the small tool back, put back into that shop, so they do their job.
Not exceed?
Not exceed forty-six hundred, not exceed them out there.
What about a scissor lift, then? Do you get a half?
Yeah, it's, it's here, it's, it's the living.
Okay.
But with you saying forty-six hundred dollars, that's what we've done so far. We still have some more to...
We're gonna ask them for that, Chris. We're asking for what we got.
Okay, so do you want me, do you want a motion to that, Mr. Bell?
Actually, can I, right, look at Mr. Henning. If we don't have a certain amount, can we approve all monies that are, uh, collected due to the
Due to salvage.
Salvage on that, be redirected, rather than having to...
I think the local, we've been, the, uh, school, if the budget's efficient, they, they'll act and say specify the amount. About exceed five thousand dollars.
Okay.
That'll work, yeah. Not exceed, not exceed five thousand.
Basically, this request and that we, uh, by the maintenance, that we direct from monies not to exceed five thousand dollars, be directed, is it incoming in the current J money?
It's in capital outlay.
Got a lot of funds. Tool line item that, that could be used by the maintenance department to, uh, replace the tools and equipment. Am I saying that correctly, Mr. Bell?
Correct.
We have that, we have that request, are you in motion to approve?
I make a motion to approve, what is that?
A motion to approve, and second, any other questions? If there are being in all in favor, so I'm saying aye. You oppose. So, move. Are we done? Angie, kind of hard act of Paul, now we need some good news going on here. Are you gonna do that for us?
Well, first thing, yes, we have a school resource officer grant that was obtained last year through the state, and it was automatically renewable this year. And what we do with that is they give us through our state allotment, the thirty-nine thousand, seven twenty-two dollar amount. And we just transfer that to the county, and they pay one of the school, uh, resource officers, and the county has to match that about eight ten thousand. But this is just the agreement to do that, and for me to be able to transfer that money to Macon County.
Any questions? Doctor, any motion that we approve or question? And, and, all in favor, so I'm saying aye. You oppose. So, move. Amendment to Franklin High School lighting project.
We can probably do these next two together. The Franklin High School lighting project, you all appropriated eleven thousand, six hundred and sixty-two dollars out of capital outlay. And then the scissor lift, you appropriated seventy-nine hundred dollars out of capital outlay. When those bills actually came in, they were a little bit more than that for a total of about a thousand and fifty-three dollars. So, I need to know what the board's wishes is. Do you want me to take that out of the capital outlay that's current J money, or do you want me to bill the county on that and reduce that from our capital outlay fund?
So, what is our options? Can you tell me again, Angie, how?
Either we're gonna pay for it out of our, um, current J monies, which I would not agree with, I think we need to preserve those, or just simply take the additional amount out of our allotted capital outlay funds we have to pay for them.
Okay. So, you want me to make a motion to take it out of our lot of capital outlay funds?
So, we have a motion that for the thousand, credit me from Rome, manages a thousand and fifty-three dollars.
Ten fifty-three, fifty-seven, it's actually.
Yeah, we take that out of our current capital outlay fund to pay for the over disform those two projects. Have a motion, but Stephanie, here's a second. Motion's second, all in favor, so I'm saying aye. You oppose. So, move.
You're starting to get that forty-six hundred dollars.
Surplus items, Angie.
Uh, this is just a resolution to eliminate a piece of equipment at Macon Middle School that is no longer usable in any way as far as even parts goes. It's a John Deere gator that's been there quite a while, and four one-thousand gallon propane tanks that were removed from Macon Middle School recently because we are converting over there to natural gas.
Now, that, that gator would look good in the hunting camp, so.
Well, we can put it in your home if you want.
It'll look good.
You don't have a motor on it.
But it would give the impression that it might be something good, right?
And we'll throw in hell aside, just go to go.
All right, we have a motion that we declare surplus of two mentioned items, which is a, a gator and, and propane tanks. Uh, any other discussion? I don't have any, any motion to approve, so move. Have a motion, very, a second. All in favor, so I'm saying aye. You oppose. So, moves. Two thousand fourteen budget resolution.
Okay, this is the fourteen, fifteen budget resolution. The first, uh, section is the local current expense. The budget resolution is shown by purpose, Tom, and I have put a, um, sheet, summary sheet in your folder that's actually by fund and program. So, that might be a little easier if you all want to go by that, that's fine, we can do it either way. But the local current expense budget is nine million, one thirty-six, nine seventy-one, sixty-eight. And the next section is state public school fund, which we're expected to see a total of twenty-five million, three eighty-one, six fifty, fifty-eight. Next section is the federal funds, which we're expected to see two million, eight hundred, seventy-four thousand, four sixty-seven, forty-six. And the last section, it was, sorry, not the last section, the next section is child nutrition, two million, five hundred ninety-two thousand, five hundred. And the last section being the capital outlay section of eight hundred, eight thousand, six forty-two, eighty-seven. And I did not put a line item budget in your folder just for the sake of saving paper and stuff, but if anyone would like to see a line item budget, I'll be more than happy to, to give you that and print it out for you. And I'll be happy to answer any questions, but for, that's a total Macon County school's budget of forty million, seven ninety-four, two thirty-two, fifty-eight for fourteen fifteen.
Can I say thank you, Angie? I don't know if this board will allow, I think they do, the work that's going into this, but this is not. Thank heavens we have someone that's willing to do that and make our job a whole lot easier. So, thank you, the board, for doing that stunning job, we appreciate it.
County has about fifteen, forty-nine million dollars.
Forty-nine, thank you.
There. This budget to the county budget, we got there.
Any questions? Uh, which I'll, though, I think is, is very, very good, and that's what I said, I don't know how much work is running into it, so thank you.
And feel free to call me anytime if you're just looking at it, you have questions. And again, if you want a line item budget, I'll be happy to script one off.
You need some reason, right? Go to sleep. Keep helpful now.
Make a motion to accept as presented by Angie.
Aye. A motion to accept the budget resolution as presented. Uh, any other questions? If there are any, all in favor, signal I'm saying aye. You oppose. So, move. Word of education information, Dr. Ball, Franklin High School Quiz Bowl.
Well, at any rate, um, it's on Facebook?
It's on Facebook, and I've got it right.
We have, uh, four students at Franklin High School qualified for the, uh, FFA, uh, Quiz Bowl, National Quiz Bowl, it's the first time in forty years that Franklin FFA has, has competed at a national level. And those four students are Brittany Burrows, Jamie Bryce, Morgan Fish, and Morgan... Just wanna make the board aware of that.
They said the paper too was.
Yeah, I think.
Hopefully did. That's outstanding for the national competition, so, as our duty forth. We just need to show how good we are. Just another way, good deal. National board, uh, national, November board meetings. And thank you, Dr. Ball.
Yes, um, Chris Chairman, as you know, the conference, the school book conference, the, the Greensboro issue, and it also corresponds with the, we have our November board meeting scheduled. So, we're looking at, um, making change to November, May, May, December. Moving to December. We're looking, we have a link, December fifteenth, we just have it open in December, or maybe move December eighth, or whatever, we'll...
It's more the perfect place to have it. If you move it back in, you have, back that means for the two week period, unless you share with the board or something like that way.
And I wouldn't, I can hear, it was here, but I'm not hearing it, so I wouldn't.
And so, the thing, I think if the fifteenth was here, I think we, I think we should honor recommend it to Nanahalo School, so we would have that.
I agree.
If that was a great, the fifteenth, December fifteenth, if it was not here, we'd rather have that in, in Hale. That would work.
That sounds wonderful, Nate.
I just think it is breaking that. Yes, that's what it is.
Fourteenth, November, November fourteenth.
Was, are you right. I'm looking at the next year, I'm sorry. It's like, wait.
It's all right.
And so, what basically what we need to do is, uh, is take the motion, we, we were in November board meeting to December fifteenth, and combine that with our December meeting to take place at Nanahalo School on the fifteenth.
I think a motion would approve in the, the date.
Second. And a motion and a second, any other special? No, and Baker said I'm saying aye. You oppose. Two thousand fifteen board meeting schedule, Dr. Ball.
Mr. Chairman, you have here, the board has a, the packets, um, coming to events, two. Oh, put that.
Yeah, the board meeting schedule, right. Did I get corrected by?
She did, she did, she did point out my, my packet, so. In your packets is the two thousand fifteen, the board of education meeting schedule. Is that an action that click on the?
It's on the link, I thought we were having our packets, but it's not there, so, yeah. She's got her head up, she's right ahead of the pool, though. In reviewing that, does anyone have any conflicts they know of at this point that, um, that might interfere with that? Sorry, really.
We woke Brittany up.
I was trying to say, yeah, she woke up, I don't know.
When's your birthday, Brittany?
Hey, what's happening? Bring the cake.
My grandbaby's birthday.
It's hard to say. It's hard to say what the conflicts are, I'm sure we will have some, but I would say let's, um, pass it and, and change it.
Yeah, let's go.
Because I have film that we changed August to try to be prior school. Um, interview will change, but I think that we will, just pass it.
Definitely, yeah. This is called as my motion to adopt the, uh, proposal schedule. Here, second. A motion to say, all in favor, say if I say an aye?
Aye.
You oppose? So move. Anything else, Dr. Ball, we had Sheriff Paul in here, so that's all I see on my, anything else? Coming events, did you have?
Tuesday, October twenty-eighth, principal meeting, that's the one, it's also the first one. Wednesday, this week is a teacher work day. What happened? Monday, November the tenth, is the same school's proposal, uh, the elder's proposal. Veterans Day is November the eleventh, no school that day. November the sixteenth, uh, the board, uh, the, uh, the, uh, the, 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 the school association conference, I believe, and, uh, the returning of the, uh, the day of nineteen. Monday, November twenty-fourth through, uh, November twenty-sixth, is teacher work days. Thursday, November twenty-seventh, and Friday, November twenty-eighth, are basically holidays. And then on Monday, December the first, we have a special college board meeting to square in, uh, board.
Yes, very, so good. What we've done, uh, board members in the past, we have that in the morning on that day, um, my usually is about nine. Yeah, about nine o'clock, major period, kind of have to come and, and do that some way for us, so. What we'll have to, we have to call meetings, we will have to induct you, the two members be, yeah, no, who doesn't?
I'm sure they'll make it work.
What I'm just saying is, we can do it later, just was asking it to be a surprise with nine o'clock, and we're good, later in the day, I'm looking at, I don't have to go anywhere, I get to come over, go down the mountains, or whatever, so.
I would make a motion to make it at nine o'clock, because somebody has to go to work, or if somebody has to go to a beck meeting, or.
Okay, so, a motion that we call our special meeting, uh, will be nine o'clock, December first, go here, second. A motion, the second, that we meet, uh, nine o'clock, all in favor, so if I say an aye?
Aye.
You oppose? So move. Mr. Henny.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman, reading the closed session is one given in GS one thirty-three point three eighteen point nine one six, to consider qualifications, competence, performance, character, fitness conditions of a wanting or petition to additional employment, an individual, public officer, employee, or prospective public officer.
Have any questions going in closed session? We need to consider all these things.
Very second. A motion, say, on the third, so if I say an aye?
Aye.
You oppose? So move, for the meeting, I will figure there will probably be announced today when we come in, sorry, I don't want to, I don't want to hear Brittany yell that.
Is it looking good, is it looking good in here?
This time, I do take a motion to come back and open session, so move, and a second. A motion to take, all in favor, so if I say an aye?
Aye.
So move. Anything else that needs to come for the board at this time?
Yes, sir, I would like to make a motion that we accept the recommendation for Devon Deal to be lead teacher for the MBI as soon as her replacement is for the Franklin High School position. And I'll second that.
A motion to accept the recommendation of our principal and, uh, accept Devon Deal as the lead teacher, subject to her replacement, her, 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 her position at Franklin High School at the time, so, you have a discussion? If not, all in favor, say if I say aye?
Aye.
You oppose? So move. Anything else?
I'd like to mention that.
A adjourned, and I think we got a second from our island representative. All in favor, so if I say an aye?
Aye.
And, very good, thank you.
Sorry, she's, uh, um, the ag teacher.
Currently agriculture.